Welcome councillors, it's one o'clock, so we'll get the meeting underway. We don't have anybody here to speak to us in public forum. Apologies, I have received one apology from the meeting who's currently in check down for council business. And I'll move that apology to the accepting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Kate. Fall in favour?
No.
Carry on. Confirmation of the agenda. I don't have any changes or haven't been notified of any. Does anybody have any? Okay. All right, I'll put it. Fall in favour?
No.
Carry on. Declaration of interest. Just reminded that if anybody has any areas of conflict, that they should note that. So that brings us to startup space, an update. And we'd welcome Ned Emerson and Heath Todd up the table. Welcome.
Thank you, Chris.
Is there anything you'd like to lead in with before I open up the questions?
I think just to note that it is an update. Heath has been running the project basically the last six months as project manager. And yes, so questions?
Sorry, I don't know if it made came before, not mind your names. I don't think it's in the report, sorry.
Right, yeah.
No, you're welcome.
Thanks.
What was your name before?
Heath, Heath Root.
Thank you.
That's right. Questions?
Thanks, Wilson. Thank you. Thanks for coming along, gentlemen. Great to see this project up and running. I have a couple of questions on 4.5, just around budgets. Where it says, just the division between the funding from the University of Tago and the funding for the Deane City Council. Our funding, council's funding seems to be close to its annual contribution then the university's. I'm just wondering if that's a timing issue or are we going to get into, are we getting into grief?
I think basically when you look at that figure, part of that cost is to do with Heath's contract for the six months to get the space up and running. There's also no account in there for the university for that space is costing them approximately, just for the space, fifty-two K a year. So they're not updated right at this point in time, councillor.
And how are conversations going with the outside politics, Nick?
It's going okay. I think we've made a, you know, a stand on contribution from that side, so things are coming right. And we've seen a bit of income coming towards us for Adacious work, so another next one is in the space. Yeah, comfortable that we'll have a bit of discussion about this.
Councillor Tavish.
Thank you. Just on the budget from your Tago University, you just said fifty-two K a year for the space alone, is that right? In which case, is the total contribution an in-kind contribution in the form of a space? Or is there an additional budget that sits alongside that?
Yeah, there are several other things in there, councillor. So it's the space, but also a contribution to some of the events that we run there. We run a startup weekend, for example, next year, and there's a contribution coming towards that as well. So there's roughly, I think, about eighty thousand dollars from their side coming in into this space. It's not all of it, it's just in terms of the building, it's adding as well to our operational.
And in terms of the intention to launch, I think, twenty fifteen, is that right? In terms of having young people in the space?
Our official opening, and we've been putting that off because we, you know, we didn't want to go for this big official thing. We wanted the space to evolve into something and it's at that point now where we can open the thing on the thirteenth of November. Invites will start going out in the next few days. And that, so it will be up and running. Now, already we have Adacious in there, we have a few other people and groups in there, running in the space. And we have three or four smaller startups starting to come to the place that's not from the student space. And so next year we'll be driving really hard to get other people in there as well. So it's running, it's up and running and it will be formally up and running on the thirteenth of November.
And just in terms of, yeah, I guess I'm interested in, when you say formally up and running, that means you will be officially advertising, is that right? For people to express interest in the space?
Yes, we've been doing quite a bit in the social media and also in the papers and so on. The Star has been quite supportive. We've had several articles on that, space and so on. And we've seen a few things in the NITV as well about entrepreneurial spaces and so on. So people are starting to take note of the whole thing. And we have a small bit of budget left to actually throw one or two things up for this year still to make sure. So when things start up in January, we'll be ready to accept people in. We don't expect too much to happen in the next six weeks, obviously, it's just that time of the year.
Yeah, well, I guess I was just wondering, I mean, given that you are up and running already, what will change on November the thirteenth that isn't already happening? Is there any discernible change?
The signage will be up, you know, it will be formal and people will then know and it will have to be sorted out and so on. We really took our time to evolve things to the point where we feel comfortable with it, rather than starting very fast. So it's different to the models that other people have been using, but I think it worked better for the new.
Yeah. And just a question for Dees. Noting the advisory board, I think appears to be just three and not including Anthony and City Council there. Are you comfortable with that, given that the DCC is the major funder?
The advisory board can change at any stage. This is a board just initially to plan moving along, councillor. So when it comes to, if we need someone from our, from the council there, it's not a problem, no problem.
No, I didn't anticipate there would be a problem. I guess my question is, do you feel that we should have someone there?
I'm of two minds, actually, being a funder and also by advice report. I feel there's people there like Professor Kingwell, Nigel Hamster, et cetera, who are well-versed in running businesses and well-versed in running finances. They've also got the city in heart, a number of things. I've come to the party a couple of things lately on the startup space. So I'm of, either way, fifty-fifty on whether you get some.
Perhaps just to add to that one, we are still in talks with the Upstart Incubator Trust, who obviously now don't have an incubator here in Dunedin. So there could well be a change to that body, the governing body for the startup space. So we would hope to have some answers on that before we leave here.
And just one final question then, Ned, is launching the thirteenth of November, I guess by thirteenth of November next year, one would hope that we'd have an idea of whether or not it was in the right place, whether or not it was working for the young people involved. Do you have a plan in place to measure the outputs from that space in the satisfaction of the student body and those who go through the space, but the student body more generally as to whether or not that space is working for them?
Councillor, yes, we've done some initial work to just look next to this strategy, if you want. And there is a bit of a ban for that. I guess it will, you know, there are several issues on that one. So we shouldn't confuse what happens in Adacious, for example, and what happens in the rest of the startup space. So there would be different measures for each of those. So my concern is more about all the other entrepreneurs, not only the students going through there. So I have people at my age trying to start a business, you know, and we need to go check on them and whether they actually find the space agreeable and whether they use it properly. So I'm looking into that and coming up with a plan for this so that we can take that to our boards that we can move on with that.
Super, thank you.
Councillor Zipp.
I was just having a thought as I remove the recommendation, but also to say how lucky, I think is the word, we are that we have someone like Heath Root's been involved in with life from the very start. And his experience and knowledge has really been a great boost in this particular project to get it off the ground. And I'm just hoping that he will stay with it and can get it through to its development and we can conclude that certainly helped to grow him further. So I'm very happy to be a part of it.
I have a second one. Councillor Ward, you've got a second question?
Yes, yes, my question was, I remember earlier I moved briefly about this, but I just can't remember now. Is it the idea that these people would want to start a business? Do they pay for the service or do they just get a six-month free and use of the computers and that sort of advice?
Right, so councillor, the whole thing was set up as a space where you bring your own devices. So they come in and there's space for them to sit. They have people like myself there to help them think about their ideas and take, for example, from Adacious and Ignite Consultants and so on. You've got quite a few bases with it. Initially, we thought about charging a small access fee to cover the cost of access cards and that sort of thing. We've decided against that at this point because it's not always subscribed. As soon as we get enough people in the space, we might want to do that. But initially, we want to make it as accessible as possible and that can change. We'll be led by our steering group on that one as well, I'll have somebody else on that one, but next.
Councillor Pete.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Heath, thank you, you worked so far on this. Could you just describe, I know it's early days, but could you describe just how you go about advertising the services of a startup and spreading the word?
Well, I think we've used social media quite a bit. There's quite a buzz on Twitter around Dunedin, bigger town Dunedin. And I've been logging into that, into that stream and I've been using that stream to get the message out there. It seems to be working well. We're also on Facebook and we will have a webpage going. We've had a few articles in the Star. There will be something around Dunedin TV as well about the space. So we've been using the media in general to do that. We have a bit of a plan for more events, related things for next year that will be advertising in town to see how it goes. But initially, it's really to get the message out through the networks, if you want. That's really important for us because otherwise it becomes, you know, just another space that looks like everything else, it's an advertised space, people go there and they... We found that that doesn't work that well, so, yeah, it's a slightly different tactic and we'll change it if it doesn't work.
There's no more questions. It's been moved by councillor Dees, was it, and settled by councillor Ward. So any debate? If not, I've got it. Fall those in favour? Okay, carry on. It takes us on to item five, the Dunedin Business Events. We'll welcome Bree Jones and Susanna Arthur. Would you like to introduce anything before we start questions or just take questions?
Just take questions?
Questions, councillors? Councillor Thompson.
You were linking in with some of the academic staff to see what could be initiated at our end, I guess, as opposed to responding to something that's been initiated elsewhere. One of the things I've wondered about is what contact you have with those people. I don't even know who they are, the people who bombard my email inbox all the time with yet another conference that it will be the end of my life if I don't attend. Clearly people do. And it seems to me that they sit in an office somewhere and dream up, you know, what the next thing is that they can promote, as opposed to originating out of perhaps academia or whatever. Do we have conversations with those kinds of people around how we could get them doing that kind of ilk bit out of here?
In terms of promoting conferences, university conferences that are...
No, no, this, I mean, these are just straight, from the best I can gather, I might be quite wrong, but they're straight commercial operators who, you know, have, I'm making it sound like they have a meeting on a Monday morning and say, what are we going to, what are we going to tick off that we could sell, you know, at this time next year to someone?
Could you go to the Jehovah's?
No, I couldn't go that way. I could have got on Friday for that one, that's no use to me.
I mean, our contacts are more with the academia and with Tourism New Zealand who have databases of key academia that are leaders in their field. And that's from a database they have from the International Commissions Association. So every conference, let's say it's the International G P Conference, that they will have noted within that database that every international conference, key speakers are in, who key leaders in each of the countries are. So if another country wants to bid, they know all the key contacts within that country in order to make it happen. But I think that's probably what you were talking about is when you want a conference organizer that perhaps, perhaps they organize up to ten to five conferences in a year. So they're just pushing out.
Well, it strikes me that they're organizing them off their own initiative as opposed to organizing them for someone. I mean, I, sorry, that's a question rather than a statement because I simply don't know, but that's the impression I have.
I know what you're talking about, I get the info all the time.
So they're asking you to, they'll tell you that, let's say, the Jehovah's Commissions in town...
No, I often get them related to farming, so there's an outfit in Auckland that just organized conferences. And they pick a subject and they make it happen, they get all their break rate paid for. And they usually bet the same price as local government, it's either six-twenty-five a day, pay you a year for years, get all the years these speakers. And look, some of them look quite good, but it's purely seems to me, I get them every two months and they keep to be, I'm just wondering. Yeah, was the question was, should we be tying them with those sort of people?
Well, that's what I'm asking. It strikes me that there's a commercial aspect, just as Mike says, I mean, I'm going and taking one of my staff to Auckland in a fortnight to attend a retail-related one, but it strikes me as being exactly that. And I don't think anyone in retail said, let's organize this and let's get a conference organizer to do it. They choose to do it. They choose to do it and then they bring some, hopefully, good speakers. And we've forked out, you know, a couple of EFS and a nice accommodation and six hundred, seven hundred dollars per person to go and hopefully be educated. And I've got no doubt that as soon as that's over, they're thinking about what the next one is that they're going to organize. Where's the next opportunity? And I just wonder whether we can, whether there's an opportunity to think about this exercise from a more proactive commercial perspective as opposed to, well, in addition to, working with the resources who might want to organize a conference?
Well, I think that, you know, a huge growth area is for people to first be able to create events rather than just trying to attract events that naturally rotate around or that we have to bid for. So if there are organizations that feel that they're strong enough to be putting on regular seminars and regular workshops, that, you know, for example, farming databases that you can buy into the likes of Farming CRT and, you know, getting free farming details in the country and do it that way. I mean, there's certainly an area for that, but I guess we focus more on that larger sort of multi-day events.
Councillor, thanks. Yes, thanks. Could either of you just tell me how that proposed advocates program is going to work, the Tourism New Zealand one? And why we have to wait two or three years to get involved?
Yeah, it's something that has been developed in partnership with Tourism New Zealand and Business Events Auckland. It's a pilot program, so Tourism New Zealand put a lot of funding and research behind it and they've created templates and I guess minimum requirements from the host region. And Auckland is probably population-wise and access to academia and that sort of thing. They're a really good leader because of their ability to host a lot of these international conferences. I mean, they are announcing almost daily that they've got a new commission for two thousand delegates arriving into Auckland. So they do seem like the economic powerhouse for leading it. However, they have identified that, given the strength of our university and our teaching institutions, that we could be the ideal next cab off the rank because we've got the specialties in terms of the medical school, the dental school and the likes. So they have identified that we could potentially, in terms of contacts, be ideal. But for Auckland, given how much investment they've put in, they have asked for exclusivity for this program for the first year, which Tourism New Zealand entered into a MOU with them because of the amount that they've put into it. And then hopefully they can then mold the template into other relevant regions from then. And, you know, it obviously has to reach a point where we've got at least three ambassadors from the university and Polytech that are prepared to put their hands up to endorse this. And that would be a commitment of, you know, three to four meetings per year, you know, putting face their name to bids, that sort of thing. So I think there's a lot more work than going to becoming one of those regions.
Okay. And you've made the linkage with the University of Tago as being one of the underpinning institutions here. But there are other conferences going on. I mean, you had psychiatrists last week, you've got rhododendrons this week. They're international conferences. And I'm just wondering, just, I mean, how much of that can, you know, outside of academia? Although some are still involved with academia, obviously.
Yeah.
Are they in running or is it just there?
Absolutely, so it's not just academia, it's business leaders, experts in their field, no matter where they come from. You know, we have, after the success of the Botanic Gardens, been dealing with the Botanic Gardens again to bid for the International Camellia Society in twenty twenty-two. So we've almost suddenly become a bit of a gardens mega for international conferences, you know, with the rhododendron festival as well. So it's anyone that is, you know, believes that bringing the conference to Dunedin is really going to showcase, you know, one of our water features, you know, we've got the only botany department in Austria, Australasia. So again, we are a really good fit for that. And when you're bidding internationally, you want to have a region home that that's relevant.
So, but you've got some, you mentioned the thirty sign-ups you require from universities, is that it? So Tourism New Zealand sets some bottom lines like that for that?
Well, you just, you want to have enough so that, because the idea is that they don't just bid for one conference and then once they've won their conference and that's then done and done. So they need to be advocates for the conference assistance program, which there's a little bit of information in the report about. So they need to, they have to spread the word throughout the university or throughout the business community about the opportunities for this. But so it's identifying people that, perhaps Jules Kaiser from the dental school, because he attends multiple international conferences, that he doesn't have the potential to just bring one conference. He has the potential to bring half a dozen over a ten-year period. So it's identifying people that have a bit of a legacy within their program and not just a one-off opportunity.
And now that we have venues up and running and a very large number of them, I mean, this must be an advantage for Dunedin and the accessibility of them.
Yeah, and we have seen strong libraries and so on.
Thank you.
Councillor Ward.
Thank you. And just on the advocates program, is that recruiting process underway?
No, at this stage, what we, what Tourism New Zealand have committed to is about two to three months of research, so identifying key people within the university. And then from there, we will work with them to see whether there are some immediate business events opportunities. And as we start to have some wins and stuff, so it's not just a case of identifying through, you're a way of the up and... They've actually got to put their hands up and start to have some wins before they can become advocates.
And those approaches are made by Tourism New Zealand offices?
In conjunction with, so I mean, some of them might put their hands up if they're aware of this conference assistance program. They'll put their hands up and say that they want to get involved in one of those conferences. Otherwise, they'll lose our level of knowledge as to, you know, who leaders are. Otherwise, Tourism New Zealand will identify through their international networks. So it's a combination.
And that two to three months of research work is that happening now?
Yes, it's starting this month.
Right. So I'm just trying to get a handle on the timeline. So Auckland launched in October twenty fourteen and they have a year exclusive use of that program, which is October twenty fifteen. But Dunedin, Tourism New Zealand's indicated that they could be interested in assisting Dunedin next in two to three years' time.
Yeah. I guess it's a case of, it's taken a company process to get them to where they are with, in terms of establishing these ambassadors and putting together a program. So it may take less than that and it may take more than that. It just depends on whether they can get a strong enough ambassador group here. Because, and also, you know, in order for that to go ahead, we have to commit resource to it. So they're talking a minimum six, eight hours a week resource within enterprises in Dunedin to be able to sustain that because there's a template that they have that will need X amount of communications per week and three to four workshops per year so that you're bringing this group together. So they're constantly networking and they're constantly sharing the information as well. So it's something that, it's just in initial discussions at the moment. It's certainly not a guarantee because I know that Wellington desperately wants to bring the next cab off the rank and they have the economic strength behind them as well and staff members to be able to facilitate that. And currently with one person working out the business bits, we wouldn't be able to do it. However, now that we've got a wider team, then hopefully we'll be able to find that sort of resource.
But your ideal scenario is for it to be ready to go in October of next year?
Ideally, but I just don't think that there would be any way that we would have it moving that fast.
Councillor Calvert.
Following on from that, it seems to me partly that that whole approach and program has got its downsides as well as its upsides. Tourism New Zealand's becoming a gatekeeper, not only bestowing this little treat on where Everett decides is worthy of it, currently Auckland, but moving on to possibly others of us. The effect of that and combining it with exclusivity means that it seems to me it's potentially more of a downside than an upside, not for us because we want to be a cab off the rank, but it's just as likely that they're going to have Auckland who squeezes out eighteen months of it and then Wellington who gets the next eighteen months or something. And all that's doing is sucking something we could be doing away from us so that we really need to try and be doing our own thing, don't we? Because we're going to have to compete against what Tourism New Zealand has given Auckland and what they might do with somebody else. So it's sort of something we have to fight against while we're trying to get into.
I see, we do, we do still do our own and Tourism New Zealand, they aren't the gatekeepers as such. To be honest, we probably, we'd struggle to get access into the university as much as we like to get hold of the university. So the best way into the university is actually going through Tourism New Zealand because they have a lot of those international networks that when you go into the university, you're not going in cold. They have the knowledge of the conference and the academic background. But also, we simply wouldn't financially be able to kickstart any massive program to the extent. There would be hundreds of thousands of dollars that have probably been really poured into this, this project to get it on the ground.
But all it's been poured into it is so as somebody else is exclusively doing it at the moment, so it's sort of...
But they do also have different niches as well. So, you know, Auckland, Rhododendron, for example, would be bidding for lots of geo-thermal style conferences and indigenous conferences as well because of the culture. You know, we focus heavily on medical, but medical and health technology conferences, dental... but medical and health technology conferences, um dental, uh you're all in ICT. At the moment, we're bidding for an international ICT conference here in two thousand and sixteen. So we are still doing, we are still doing it. I, I know that they're getting um, they are getting this, but the follow-on is that we're not going to have to pay to roll it up any of these templates and that Tourism New Zealand will then start providing us with cash to be able to roll that out. So I, I said what, I said what you mean is that they are hitting the head, but at the same time, they're working with their own group of utilities. So they're not trying to, to tag into our universities to get ones in that queue. So.
Sorry, we, we can't do anything about how it's happening. I'm just sort of saying it's a double-edged sword and we need to be sort of doing our own thing separately, especially since there's going to be major competition trying to suck it away from us every moment and being supported by Tourism New Zealand to do so.
Councilor White.
Thank you. Um three, um is it, under the Tourism New Zealand, are they chasing the big conferences first through this advocates program? Is that why Auckland would be the first cab off the rank?
Uh at, at the moment, the minimum requirement is two hundred delegates. So they, I mean, obviously there's huge return for Auckland because they can host up to two, two and a half thousand. And obviously with the new international convention center, they can start bidding now for two thousand and twenty something and try and attract four thousand people conferences. So obviously, um I can understand why that is the first region chosen. But in saying that, you know, there are benefits to Auckland securing conferences from a greater tourism industry perspective because international travelers don't come all the way to Auckland from Europe, let's say, just to spend two or three days in Auckland and then leave again. So there is the greater tourism opportunities um for us and, and the traditional off-seasons, which is, which is really important. But also, you know, this conference in two thousand and twenty that um, the two and a half thousand that Auckland won, but as a result, the Taro University will be hosting a satellite conference for up to four hundred people. So yeah, are still following um benefits from Auckland hosting that.
Well, what is your average lead time for a conference, say of two to four hundred delegates?
Uh domestically, you're looking eighteen months to two years. Uh internationally, you're looking, um as I said, this month, we've put out a bid for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. A couple of months ago, we had a win for two thousand and eighteen. So I would say minimum two years, up to eight, two years. It, it, it depends on the size of the conference, the larger the conferences are. So once you get above five hundred, obviously they're having to lock in three or four years in advance to make sure that the city has the new capacity to host.
And what would be our biggest competitor for hosting conferences in New Zealand? Like, would it be Christchurch or Wellington?
It, internationally, it's, it's Auckland. Um and Christchurch, probably i- in the competition of the air, the access internationally um for air capacity. So, you know, we have the additional um fighter being able to say, you've got to connect through Auckland and Christchurch to DQ. But at the same time, we're not going out to target any conference we can get our hands on. We're trying to get it relevant so that our university is enough of a drawcard over the likes of Wellington and Auckland. So internationally, Tourism New Zealand would never put two regions up. So Tourism New Zealand will always support the particular region that wants to put their hand up to host it. Or if the international committee would come to them, they would recommend two or three um, two or three regions that have the ability to host it or have the leaders in their field there and go from there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Just the point, as you mentioned, the um expanded capacity coming soon to a senior near you in Auckland. Um but also, you know, this, we're looking at expanded capacity in the conference field and Wellington, um potentially at Christchurch, um at least one in Queenstown. What effect does that have? That saturation um relative to the demand on potentially driving down the value of um the conferences that we do attract to Dunedin?
Well, I think that's, you raised an important point is that we are, you know, we've, we've got this window of opportunity and as of two thousand and seventeen, we're going to have effectively three or two to three brand-new conference destinations come back online with, with new venue capacity. But I think that's where the international conferences are, is the growth area. Because if New Zealand are going to commit to building all of these great new facilities, they're both chasing new business. They can't have all of these, these convention centers chasing that same business that rotates, which is the domestic business. So that's why I think we need to put more emphasis into attracting the international conferences because it's new business filling all those different regions.
Councilor Lawson.
Um I'm happy to move the report, the recommendation just to get that going. But the question I've got is, how important are the things that go as, if you've got a whole lot of new convention centers, how important is the other stuff that goes with the, the um other conference material, like cycle tracks and um old stints and the museums? Because those are things that other cities may not have.
Yeah.
And how important those sort of quality experiences are for the city in your opinion?
Well, absolutely. Um it's vital for us, um particularly on a domestic, uh when we're attracting domestic conferences, not so much because the domestic traveler, um not as good as experiencing all that we've got to offer. But um from an international perspective, the wildlife and, and the heritage are huge selling points. And particularly at our conference venues and some of our accommodation are actually council within heritage buildings. It's a huge selling point. But of course, that aside from the conference, they're getting those once-in-a-lifetime experiences. It's, it's a huge part of what we push in the bid. So when we push these international bids, we're working together with the destination, Dunedin as a destination as well as, you know, the B U stuff. It's not the focus of all. So it's really important, but I guess that leads on to the debate about whether we need the additional hotel as well.
Uh it's being moved by Councilor Lawson and submitted by Councilor McTavish. So there's no more questions. Any vote? If not, I'll pull it. All in favor? Against? Harry. One and six. Want to take a look at this? Do you want to introduce the audit or?
No, quite a mistake. On the Dunedin.
Councilor Bannister.
I'm wondering, there's how, how many staff are actually in the Economic Development Department?
In the Economic Development Department?
Six. And this is, I take it for an extra two to facilitate projects?
This, this is the two of the biggest projects we've got on the books at the moment. And um it is basically for a, for a um, a dedicated resource for each of those projects. And it's been well recognized by the Groden Ead Partnership that this is required with um, with project management, with one of the incumbents at the moment. Um the project that she is working on is taking up, I would say, far in excess of forty hours per week, far in excess. There is one who's, the other staff within the Economic Development Unit or within um Enterprise Dunedin, have each got a number of different things that they work on. And um they just would not have the ability to, to, to cross matches. They can fill the odd cap if it arises, but they cannot to run the whole project.
So um I don't want to be disrespectful to our current six staff, but why is it that we are having to get um outside people? Is it because they've got skills that our staff don't have? Or is it simply the time factor that you suggested this year?
This, the person we've got, the incumbent we have at the moment in the Education Portfolio has come from Education New Zealand. They're well insured with what's going on at a, a national level. They've moved down here to basically take up, take up the position. And it's been on a one-year contract. With one of the things we've noticed with a project like this, if you, people need some sort of idea of where they're going with the project within one year just doesn't cover it. If you, if you say it should, if those people leave, it takes you half, half a year to get the next person up and running. They need to make appropriate contacts. They need to pick up each of these six or seven projects within that portfolio up. So it's, that is one of the reasons why we're looking for a um, at least a three-year, a three-year term for these.
Um through the chair again, this, this three-year term, you note on six point two that the um budgets has yet to be ratified for fifteen, sixteen. Um but you're asking now for a commitment for these two extra people for three years?
We've taken it basically counter to on the, on the assumption that our budget for economic development strategies will stay approximately the same. If it was found over the next two years, for whatever reason, if one of those particular projects dropped off the, dropped, dropped off the radar, then that would obviously affect the incumbent person.
Um we've got three pages of information here which just basically seem to keep saying the same thing over and over again, that we have to have this coordinator or these coordinators to gain more momentum, essential in maintaining the momentum, progress faster and more effectively, making very good progress, having seen the progress. It's all very repetitive and nebulous stuff. Can you give me some idea what these special coordinators actually do and why we have to get outside staff on top of all the staff we already have to do that?
These outside coordinators have been given a big task with delivery exclusively on a couple of majors, major projects which are in the economic development strategy. Our previous, our um existing coordinator in one of those has given briefings from time to time on the projects that she is involved with. There is about five or six specific projects under the Education Portfolio. Um as I, as I mentioned before, she's working far in excess of forty hours per week. And what more can I say? We all realize, the Groden Ead Partnership have realized that each of these projects, they seem to function better when there is a dedicated resource. And not all of the team that we have within the economic development at the moment can just drop tools and pick up these, pick up these um particular projects. We've got people dealing with Callahan, existing staff, for example. We've got people dealing with the visitor industry. So the whole host of, we've got people dealing with the business board for exporting project. We've got people dealing with the red carpet project. And it just goes on and on and on.
I think the, the key thing here, Councilor Bannister, is this is not Enterprise Dunedin casting to employ these coordinators. This is the Groden Ead Partnership recognizing that in the case of the uh Education Apple project, where we've had a coordinator now for about eight months, nine months.
Nine months.
Um but that person was doing an exceptional job. Uh the project has gained considerable momentum. And we had to decide whether we would endorse a continuation of that contract or not. So we have recommended that that contract be continued. The person is doing a very good job in the role. Um the other project, which has had a coordinator part-time from finance department, is Project Shanghai. And um we, we started to realize as that project is growing quite quickly, uh the, the person who has been filling this role is, is now not able to fulfill the role that they're actually employed with um in finance. So we have to effectively look for someone who can do that role, um which may or may not be the person who's been doing it now. But it, but it can't sit in the space that it's in with a person who's got significant responsibilities in finance trying to hold down this, this job as well. So it's not an increase in budget. It comes from the uh Economic Development Additional Fund. The Groden Partnership was asked that some of that fund in the future years be tagged to the employment of these coordinators.
Yeah, I understand that it's, it's not, that it's coming out of the half million-dollar budget that, that they have. Um but in terms of my long experience of the money we've been putting into the Economic Development Unit, the number of staff that we have there and the tangible results that I've seen come out of it, um I would like to foreshadow that I'm going to move, that we actually cut a hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of the EDS budget, uh out of the EDU budget, um that we don't go ahead with these extra people. Um because.
What if, oh, you can't move the motion against council resolution of having that money in the budget? That's all, I mean, it's a nice idea if you want to do it, but you can't do it with this committee. You can't take something out of an EDU budget at this meeting because it's put in there but then you're playing time.
It's not true. It's rubbish.
It was, it was put in the, in the annual plan. I'm not sure whether as council we can withdraw money that has been allocated in the annual plan or.
We can put money in and we can take money out. Can you please rule on the point of order? Again.
I am unsure whether we, as, as this standing committee can remove money from the annual budget.
I'm happy to withdraw and that is, that is, we will.
We will clarify.
Yeah. I'm happy to withdraw.
Are we going to get a ruling on the point of order or not?
It's a lot of draws. No, this is foreshadowed.
Councilor Lawson's withdrawn it. I am still going to seek some advice. Um so if you then subsequently decide to move that resolution, we know where we stand. Councilor Lewis.
Uh thank you. My question's about the timeline and that this request is for funding, funding commitment for three years. And I realize that um job security is, is important anything more than three years is foreign to most of us. But um we've made a decision.
This is ninety-five grand, is it?
We've made a decision as, when, when it comes to funding civic routes or events in the community, that we would have made commitments on behalf of future councils um in terms of those funding arrangements. So I wonder whether it would be amenable um to a BA for the, for the two years. Because to do, what, what are the interests of consistency more than anything else?
Thank you, council. I think where you can be from exactly right, you're automatically a future, future council. But in principle, I think if, in principle, if um the council was just to give the go-ahead on this particular, obviously any new council could decide themselves on that, you know, within that, that last year, if you like. But I think within, within principle, the people.
How, if we were to sign people on for three-year contracts, employment contracts, how could a future council go back on that arrangement?
I think if we go back, council, to what I said before, if the, if this particular, if the projects were not working for a particular, um for a particular reason, um we would have to go obviously through a series of um, you know, there would no longer be a call. So we need to do something on those.
Okay.
But I do know what you're saying. You've got, you know, from two-year period, you, you would be committing. But all I'm saying is, in principle, if you were to agree to the funding regimes we've got to play down, obviously any new council coming.
Would a two-year term have a, have significantly adverse effects on the caliber of staff you would be able to recruit for this position?
It would be better than no, than no, than none. Because I know, I know what would happen with one particular. Because I know, I know what would happen with one particular at the moment. If there's not some resolution, um, they will probably go back, go away, back to where they come from. And that would be, I believe, is a very, very difficult situation.
All right, um, councillor Shelby.
I'd like to take that slightly different, um, issue than what I think councillor Hawkins is raising, which is that if we're assuming that this sort of half million dollars that goes into economic development and it gets rearranged according to what expert staff and the committee and things think are a better, you know, the best things for our bucks and things, and this is one of them. Does this approach, be it two years or whatever, um, change the chances of one of the others having, um, a better, um, success? Or to put it another way, um, if for instance, we came out next year in annual plan time and decided that everyone's budgets were just going to be chopped by ten percent. Or if not everybody's, everyone's, unless they could have a good reason why not, or some twenty, some five percent. Does putting this in here have the effect that this has a priority and can't be cut? And therefore that if there was half a million dollars here, then something else in economic development would have to wear that. If the financial effect was reduced, are you hearing what I mean? Does this proposal give a priority to this compared with other use of economic development in a budget? Through cutting exercise?
Through the chair, I can't make a decision on that because that decision would be made by the, the Grover and Eden partnership.
It would actually be. If the Grover and Eden partnership received less funding, then it would have to decide where that funding should be applied. And it would do that on the basis of where the best traction was being got for economic development.
Yes, so it wouldn't ma- make any difference in that our council could just say, we're a bit strapped. We're instead of giving you the amount we gave you last year. Yep, so.
So it doesn't, it doesn't commit the council. This is a, what, what's being committed here is uh, the Grover and Eden partnership is committing, wishing to commit some of its current budget over those, those three years. If council then reduced the amount of the fund for which Grover and Eden partnership, um, governs, then that would result in the Grover and Eden partnership having to return to the budget that it had about.
So the, the essence of that then, and I'm not sure which, maybe it's more, more appropriate for you to answer, but the effect of that is surely that we don't need to be asked for three years or two years or any amount. We, we, we've been asked by Grover and Eden partnership whether it's appropriate for them to commit out of the budget they've got at the moment or out of economic development that amount. And it isn't for two years or three years or anything. That's just the way it is at the moment. And they would be likely, they're indicating, Grover and Eden partnerships indicating that they would want to have this continue for three years, but we're not committed to it. That's a choice they would make. So the three years isn't relevant to us apart from just a, a sort of a, a, a.
It gives a heads up to council that the Grover and Eden partnership's intent is to commit that amount from the budget uh, going forward, so.
But we're not committing to that. It's a heads up that you might be, and if you came back and to us, yeah, we're short of money. So if you, if we just let the three years out of it, just as a, that's a heads up from Grover and Eden. But all we're doing is.
Except that in this case, we are making commitments to real, real people. So, um, you know, when it comes, if there isn't money like any business, then you have to face that um, difficult position, but.
But Grover and Eden faces it, um, or not. If we're short of money, it is faced.
The two projects that we're talking about here are probably the two, two highest performing and most advanced projects we've got. So I suspect if funding reduced, these two projects would probably continue.
But it's Grover and Eden's.
But that's, that has to be weighed up at the top. Next, uh.
Through the chair, just through, it is basically just from the existing budget, all the Grover and Grover and Eden partnership, um, which they've acknowledged, is that they're wishing to have some of that money utilised with two particular coordinators, two particular projects, with the exit from within the existing budget. That's really, and it's been brought to the committee. In terms of transparency and look at what, what they're looking for.
It, it takes it over for this year and probably for the future years, assuming they continue. It would take the budget beyond a hundred thousand dollars from which the council, the standing committee has to make a decision. So councillor Thompson.
Just, just for some clarification, essentially, um, you have a budget. Um, you could in fact, if you wanted to, brought this to us as two completely separate items, in which case each of them would have been under a hundred thousand dollars and wouldn't have had to put up with this, um, issue. But, uh, in, in the sake of transparency, you brought them both together.
Through the chair, that's correct.
And essentially, your understanding is that the council voted your budget, put a governance body in place and said, go away, and between yourselves, think about the best possible uses of this budget. And in your view, these two lines are part of that best possible usage.
Through the chair, that's correct, councillor.
Um, my, my other question is, um, the, around the education, um, is that correct? Yes, um, the, are, are the, the schools and the uni, they're still doing their own thing within that. So this is not replacing their effort. It's augmenting it. Is that correct?
There is far, far better coordination of total effort now. The schools are involved, the high schools are involved, there's some private institutes involved. Both the university and the polytech are also involved. And the feedback from those particular organisations has been amazingly good. To see the city, actually the city leading on this, we're not going to say it stains that the city leading on this forever and a day, but to get the thing off the ground, I tell you what, the feedback I've had from, from people involved has been amazing.
So it's not that the city's being asked to pick up the tab for other people's endeavours. They're still picking up those tabs.
They're picking up their travel, their travel, if they're going offshore or whatever, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll become, we're also getting money from Education New Zealand as well. We've, we've had fifty thousand from Sotah, and we're also got another funding adaptation with the Mahalo. So we're looking also for alternatives outside traditional, um, traditional funding areas.
And, and in the, the, the view of Grover and Eden, the, the, the education sector is a significant potential contributor to city economic development.
Education is probably one of the big contributors to, as we all know, to Dunedin's economy.
Just trying to avoid having a discussion as well. Councillor.
Yeah, the, I was just going to ask the question was, uh, I was just going to say I'll be happy to move to the board. So it was a question.
Uh, I'll come to you, councillor Vandis. Councillor Bezir.
He is, um, I under- understand the, the position with the, um, export education, and I think she's doing a great job, and that's, that's clearly understood. The, um, the project China position though, um, is it just a finance person you're looking for? Because it, it, it sort of reads like that there, and I think that would have been helpful because it's not the way I see it. Um, I, I think a person's got to be involved totally in, that means, um, through financing as well as culture and, and all other ways that to develop that particular part of business.
Through the, through the chair, councillor, this position will be advertised? So there isn't, there's no one at the moment who is earmarked for that particular, particular position?
Uh, finance is not a skill that we're looking for.
No. Yeah, it's just unfortunate that almost, that reads that way in the, in the report. But, um, certainly not the way I see it at all.
Councillor McTavish.
I'm happy to second the, the motion, um, just seeking your, um, clarification, Mr. Chair, that it is fifty thousand, which is a delegation for the Grover Partnership, and anything over fifty thousand comes back here.
Uh, it was modified.
It was further modified, right.
Like you were away, I think, so.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, councillor Vandis.
Um, through the chair, um, and for the sake of transparency, on six point two, the budget referred to is a projects budget, the five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, half a million dollar projects budget. In addition to that, you have a half dozen staff which must have salaries budget of a similar amount, another half a million dollars.
I need to go back and look at that.
Well, assuming similar numbers. My question is, if you've already got a half a million dollar salaries budget, and then you have a projects budget that you want to take half of it out of even more salaries, um, do you not end up with a situation where you end up with a whole lot of salary people and no really effective projects budget? No real budget for advertising, no real budget for actually, um, producing the sorts of things that, that these staff are going to produce?
I'm not quite certain, councillor, where you're coming from with that particular.
Well, I mean, if you want to attract education people here or whatever, supposedly you've got advertising in China, you've got to uh, put ads in the media, you've got all sorts of costs associated with the project as opposed to costs associated with staff coordinating the project. My concern is that we already have half a dozen staff in this department. And that if we, uh, and, and they already have a, a, a salary budget, if you take your projects budget and use half of that for salaries, it doesn't leave that much left for projects.
Each of those, each of those projects that we're discussing at the moment, those two projects, within those projects, each of those coordinators normally comes through the Grover and Eden partnership with a project budget on different aspects of, of what they're doing. And it's for the Grover and Eden partnership to decide on. If it's something to do with advertising, communication within a, within a project, whether they'll get that amount of money or whether they'll get less of that. So that's where the, it's got nothing really to do with existing, with existing staff.
The other thing that has to be remembered here is that through the partnership and the linkages from that, there are other funders who are putting money into these projects. So for instance, the, uh, Education New Zealand has put in, what, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
And there's another application with them now. So in fact, we got twenty thousand, I think, at the start, and we've, we did that, that do the, do the initial, um, work. So there is outside funding that is being brought in. And if you haven't got a coordinator, you haven't got a project that's striving strongly, then you have less chance of attracting external funding, which I think is the, the key thing here.
Oh, I, I understand the attraction of external funding as being somehow desirable. But I wonder how many staff you need to do that? My concern goes back to a split between salaries and actual projects, which was a bone of contention for a long time in the grants area. And which I'm pleased to say has been recently, I think, sorted to the extent that uh, a lot of the money that simply used to be for projects just went to coordinators and the projects sort of languished as a result. That's sort of been sorted on the grants area of things. But for many years, it seemed to me to be a way of employing a lot of extra people on top of the large number of staff the DCC already have. What I don't see in this report, uh, and I see a lot of repetition in three pages here. What I don't see is what is actually being done? And why our existing half dozen staff don't have the skills to do it? I mean.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but, um, the language that councillor Vandis is using is disrespectful to staff and I think is inappropriate. I'm standing orders. He's insinuating that staff that are employed don't have the skills to perform the roles that they are employed for, and I think that is disrespectful.
Hold it, hold it. My question was actually, why is it that the staff we have don't have the skills to do these sorts of jobs?
Through the chair.
I, I don't see that it's been disrespectful. I anticipate the issue.
Through the chair, councillor, I think you're getting things just a little bit mixed on this one. We are just asking, it's a request from the Grover and Eden partnership for a amount of funding for two projects or that is under an existing budget which they've been given to, and we've come to council in the, in the for transparency reasons, believe it or not, come, that's what it's about. It's not about other staff, anything like that.
With respect, my understanding is that this report is asking me to vote for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars every year for two new staff to do the work of the EDU. And I see nothing in this report at all to suggest how that work is different from what existing staff could do. In the absence of any real reason for funding two more salaries, I'm, I'm, look, if someone gave me some reasons for doing it, other than gain more momentum and maintaining momentum, good progress and seeing the progress, I can't put, I can't vote for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars with the rate payer's money for what seem to be coordinating extras.
Through the chair, it is not coordinating extras. Um, this amount has been, the Grover and Eden partnership, we have five partners, Targa Southwood Employers Association, Targa Chamber of Commerce, the University of Otago, the Targa Polytechnic, two of our renegades, Na Kahu, have all asked, they see the benefit of having these two extra people for those particular positions. They have got an existing budget, and they are asking the council, because of transparency, if they would support them going forward with that particular issue.
Is there any reason why the university won't fund it, the renegades won't fund it? Or the other people that you mentioned, is there any reason why they wouldn't fund it, given that they are the people that seem to take advantage of it?
The amount of money at the moment has been put through by council, it's five hundred and eighty thousand. There is a body for the Grover and Eden partnership who basically makes some decisions on how this will be spent, and they are asking council because of, because of transparency, to support them with this particular endeavour, which is two coordinators going forward for two particular projects, two large projects.
I don't have any other questions. The, uh, recommendations have been moved by councillor Ward and submitted by councillor McTavish. So I'll open it up for them. Councillor Vandis.
It may well be that there is value here for this, um, projects budget to be used for two new coordinator salaries. What concerns me is that it may equally not be any particular value in it. And there's nothing in this report that I can pin down, other than the talk about gaining and keeping momentum, that, that I can justify saying, I'm going to take almost two hundred grand of rate payer's money and give it to these two extra staff to do this particular job, when I don't know what the job is, I don't know what the outcomes are going to be. when I don't know what the job is, I don't know what the outcomes are going to be, and, but what I do know is that we already have quite a number of staff already involved in this area. The report gives me nothing to go on at all. And given that it's a largely repetitive report with nothing in it that I could justify the spending for, I simply can't vote for it, sorry.
Councilor Wylie.
Thank you. Well, that was pretty predictable. Councilor Vandemus continues, every time an economic development comes forward, decides he wants to turn it down. I think in this case he's picked on the wrong two issues, export education, Project China, to which is anti-growth, anti-spendware than two. The current visits to China by the mayor and the team easily signifies the project in China and its value to the city, and I think the ninety-five thousand dollars to cover a person to really grow that is important. Education is really one of the fundamentals of the city, and the education teamwork by all the staff and the facilities really shows that, and they've really come together into, to form a united group. On top of that, in the two thousand and thirteen budget, government put forward an extra forty million dollars to promote international education, which brings in two billion dollars a year and thirty-two thousand jobs. Dunedin gets close to two percent of that, and hopefully we can grow it to four percent as the government continues to increase spending in this area. I for one would totally be supporting this, and I think we move on to more questions.
Any other speakers?
Yeah, I, I agree entirely with Councilor Wylie. This, this is just a re-allocation of the funds, that's all. We granted those funds quite some time ago, so it doesn't surprise me. It's just a, a further development of our economic development strategy, and there was always going to be requests, come to the committee or the council for jobs or positions that were identified by the Grover and Eadham Group and our, our economic development strategy, and I expect will, will come through in time as other elements of our economy become apparent that they need support or want support or deserving of support. So, I, I certainly, I'm certainly behind this, and I'm certainly looking forward to
Right of reply, Councilor Ward.
I agree with what's been said by Councilor Wylie, Councilor Besset. I, I just believe this is a good project. Look, six months ago, we made a decision, it might have been seven months ago, to give someone funding for, for six months for a trial. Hey, somebody suddenly comes along and does a good job, and then all of a sudden we want to pull the rug out from underneath them, it just doesn't make sense to me. If Dees is confident that the person that they've got in mind to further this education is able to do the job, is adequate at doing the job, and has actually been very good at the job, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to progress it, and so I'm happy to.
All right, Councilors, I'll put it, all in favour? Against?
No, reported, please.
Right, we move on to item seven. The audacious student-based promotion programme.
Happy to move.
Move, Kate Wilson, seconded by Andrew Wylie. Are there any questions? Councilor Thompson. Welcome, give you a chance to interview a chair.
My, my, my question around this is, stems out of a little bit of experience with one year being a judge on the program, and in the last year mentoring one of the category winners, and it seems to me that this is a, a really important thing to continue to support, but I wonder whether we have given enough thought to how we leverage off this? And if I, this is a question, but I can perhaps provide just some background. When I was a judge, one of the things that I realized was that there was some remarkably smart ideas, but they weren't necessarily being presented by people who had the faintest idea how to turn them into reality. And if they did, they didn't have the capital to do so. I mean, they were all students, so. And so I wonder what thought has been given to whether we can leverage something that carries on after the awards? I, I don't know whether it's an annual one-year scholarship that could be sponsored by someone or whatever, because if you could keep one of those projects in development here, and even if one in ten came off and became an eighty instruments or a whatever else, the, the benefit to Dunedin would be substantial, but most of these kids go away with the idea and nothing ever happens, or if it doesn't happen somewhere else. So, would you like to comment on that?
Through the chair, Councilor Thompson, I think you've got something right, absolutely right there, because there does seem to be that, that gap between, if you like, the finishing, or, you know, if you like, with the audacious program finishing, finishing study, where they go, and we're trying to get our heads around at the moment, a number of people, about how we can fill that gap, how we can assist that gap. But through, there is a new startup fund, which they're looking at putting some money into, into new ventures. There's no lack of capital. I had a person the other day just put hundred and fifty thousand to a firm themselves, so there is capital out there, but just how we get the connection there is not true on that one. But it is a work in progress, because we haven't got the answer to that yet. It's probably a mixture of different things. There's the funding, as you say, there's a, I guess, is their, is their idea good enough for them to take it, do they believe it enough? All sorts of things around it, but we are, we are, look, working through that. What we're trying to do also is develop an entrepreneurial, if you like, new business start space at the University bridges. It's got a number of the different elements together, like audacious, like ignite, so we, you know, we've got to be able to handle what's in, in that group. So, each is a work, work in progress.
I think I should just, I failed to introduce you. So, we have with us Kate Twinkle, your coordinator for?
Yes, the audacious program, yeah. It's definitely a gap that we have identified, and students and staff noticed it as well. They, they've got audacious plans, and then there's nothing this summer, and there's events, and then they might leave, or they might come back next year, and their ideas completely forgotten. So, it's certainly something that we're looking into. The startup space that Dees and Hank spoke about earlier is one of those ways that we can continue to support them throughout the summer at least, so they can have one-on-one advice from Hank. We are working with a lot more Dunedin businesses this year as well, so we're in touch with various people for mentoring purposes. And there's also, this, the startup weekend program that runs nationally and internationally, sometimes has a startup weekend next program, and so that, that focuses on the ones that come out and are committed to continuing with their business idea. So, it's certainly something that we are interested in looking into, with some other kind of support structure for the ones that are committed to continuing, because a lot of them just aren't, they're not interested in carrying on, but we do want to support the ones that are still committed to starting their business.
Councilor Ward.
Yeah, thanks. I guess my question was similar to Councilor Thompson's, and, and you've sort of answered, or at least I've sort of understood your answer to it, and that was the, how you see the relationship working between audacious and the startup space, beyond there being a potential office space for them in a semi-formal arrangement over the summer, or, you know, basing audacious at that local, physical location. I mean, has there been, it doesn't, to me feel like, do you envisage the startup space being the missing link that Richard was, was talking about, or is, or is it not?
Not to the time.
Far enough in that direction, and is there something else that has to go on top of that?
Something else definitely. The startup space gives them physical space to work on their business idea, so if you're a student, it's an opportunity to the library or the bedroom, yeah, or white community, it's somewhere that they can meet other people that do the same thing. And so, the space is a physical space, we have Hank there as well to give one-on-one advice, but it is something more that we really are hoping to put together, and it will be something that we work with Hank on, some kind of ongoing support for them as a group, in terms of the relevant, the one-on-one assistance that you can offer. And putting them in touch with the initial funders as well, so with the names or tabloids for education.
But is there not an element of that in the startup space work, with regards to, you know, the, the relationship with partners or whoever?
This is all about the startup space. There's already big people down there, Matt Goldman, for example, who is a real, his real interests are pitching, and he's been down there, and he's assisted some of the people in the space of pitching, had their idea forward, had to sell something. So, there is, this space is going to be where, we'll get different speakers in at different times, where all those, all those in that space can learn and understand the benefits. And some of them will be around funding, and, but also marketing, all sorts of things, also channels, where they can go get the appropriate advice on things like that. It's not full of experts, Councilor. We've got experts on the ground.
Infinite. Needless to speak, I mean, I guess my concern is that there's not, is there a dual patient going between these programs? Why are they separate programs, rather than being part of a, like a, a single ecosystem that has a, because I'm struggling to get the relationship.
They're certainly part of the same ecosystem. I'm not entirely sure why they're primarily separate, but we, we work together as one part of the startup ecosystem in there. So, Hank advises students on audacious, and people that are working in that space, the, all the workshops that we run to audacious are available to people that are in the space. So, they're certainly going to work together. Audacious would be the official one of the, the four workshops, so it's about a hundred people who go coming to, along to those workshops. The space provides people to come and work on their ideas outside of the workshops, and we hold informal workshops, twenty, thirty people in the space as well. So, especially the trainers out there, they'll be working very closely together. So, the financial stuff that's kept secret, and I'm not sure exactly why.
But those two groups don't completely overlap, does that make sense?
One, one difference, the audacious program tends to deal with just students. So, that is, whereas the, the startup space, as we know, is not the old young student, not student, in the social enterprise space, or in just the normal business space, that is minimal. So, there is that audacious business to do with polytech and university.
You'd grow out of it, audacious, do you?
Well, I hope so.
Councilor Tavish.
Thank you, and thank you, Kate, for your work. The question that I have is about the social enterprise, the growth of social enterprise, and can't remember who it was I was speaking to in the last couple of months, but they spoke about the fact that a number of the student programs, and I imagine it's probably the startup weekend that are being run on campuses, the increasing number of social enterprises coming through, and are having to recheck their programs to effectively cater for the skills and, and the support that those ideas need, which perhaps is slightly different from the traditional business, yeah, skill set. Do you have intentions to tailor or provide additional or alternative support for people that are interested in social enterprise? Do you anticipate having a social enterprise stream to audacious and/or, and I mean, the competition and the broader project?
We do, so there's a doing good category. There's four categories on audacious, and one of them is doing good. I think they were introduced, the categories were introduced last year. So, it's social enterprise, not profit. And I know last year there was about fifty of these in the social enterprise category in the first round. This year we have about twenty, I think, in the social enterprise category. It's certainly something we're going to retain, and it's something we want to push a lot more of. We've had Lani Evans come in and speak, so we're going to workshops, so students come to that, and not just to say, your major should be social enterprise, but keep these, these values in mind for any future. So, we really want to keep social enterprise, that workshop is one of the main workshops, as opposed to being sort of an additional one.
Yeah.
Lani was also one of our judges, and is keen to help mentor students that are interested in that area as well. So, next year, with the development of the space, we do want to enlist a whole range of different mentors, and we want to make sure that there's some in the social enterprise space as well, so the one-on-one support for them, aside from the competition and the workshop. Yeah, it's definitely, I think, we want to make sure we continue to support both students, and the runner-up this year was social enterprise, as well, by my way.
Yeah. Thank you.
No other questions? Councilor Pete.
Yeah, Kate, in terms of, of which sectors of those socio-economic sectors are attracting the most interest in terms of the role that you're looking at?
In terms of the, the ideas.
Yeah, yeah, just where, where they're pitching.
Yeah.
What are they pitching at?
There's still a lot of student-focused ideas, because that's what they know overall. It is something that we try to steer them away from, because there's certainly ideas that they can address, but they should be looking for them. So, we're trying to move them all towards business-to-business sort of areas. There, we're trying to figure out the categories and how they look best, and we'd like to align them on what Dunedin's for that as well. So, with the various investment priorities, we're not entirely sure if the students' ideas match up with the investment priorities at this stage, or whether if we use those as a focus, will the ideas start to work around those, like health and fashion and issue management. So, it is sort of a, it's tricky, because their ideas don't fit there neatly at the moment, but if those were the official categories, perhaps it would encourage them to back along those lines, as opposed to just choose ideas.
So, you mentioned the four categories, and not-for-profit, one of them. So, what are the others?
They are, they're, they're quite vague, they're specific industries, so we have acting now for the ones that are, that could basically get their product from the shop in the first month time. There's thinking big, so bigger ideas that may not be very early-stage, we still wanted to acknowledge that it's a good idea and to encourage them to continue working on it. And the getting creative category, because we have a lot of design students from both the polytech and university, so those are the ideas that the design of the product or service is competitive advantage. The trajectory, and we found them a little way either started in January, so we've sort of inherited them, we do want to recheck them in our municipal city, so that's a challenge for next year.
Thank you. Any more to move on? Happy to move, keep a note in the question.
I've just, I'm just thinking about that, if you were to align them with the city's investment priorities, where would that leave the creative section?
That's a good question, because I think we may end up with a big other, and that's not what we want, so.
We used to.
We want to keep, we definitely want to keep Dunedin in mind and make it more aligned in the street, as opposed to, now, it's been driven into sort of stage of development. So, it will be, when we're making that social enterprise, we're going to come around the random industries that, but we'll come, so we don't want to end up with ten different categories, but we do want to find some way to compare apples and apples, and to encourage students with ideas from the sectors to be involved in the work.
The recommendations have been moved by Councilor Pete, seconded by Councilor Ward. There's no more questions. We'll...
Counselor Thompson, no comment or question.
Okay, so we're over for a bit of a, Counselor Thompson.
Look, I support this, obviously, and I don't mean this unkindly, but at the moment it's a donation because it's great event and it's great for the participants, but we're not leveraging off it. And it seems to me that we need to do that. We need to actually be working over the next year to think through, how do we leverage off this? So that, we still have a great event, nothing's changed in that regard, but the potential to make something happen as a result of it in Dunedin is potentially achieved. And it seems to me that that could be done actually relatively inexpensively because it doesn't necessarily have to be focused around the winner. Because the winner could be the big idea that's going to take ten years to and may or may not happen. But there could be the, there could be a scholarship kind of component that you could get sponsorship for that would enable you to put a mentoring team and advice and potentially introduction to investors around over a summer internship program where somebody, you know, had the potential to get something off the ground. And certainly when I was a judge, I mean, one of the very strong impressions I was left with was this is a great idea here, but they're never going to happen. And the person that I've mentored through the year now would get her product to market in time for Christmas. But the things that she just had no idea about, if you'd asked me, I would never have guessed that she would have no idea about. So it's just, because you get used to knowing how the system works and knowing what you're doing, you just don't think about the things that people just don't know. And so if we could really put some energy into doing that, and I don't think it has to cost us anymore, it just has to cost us a bit of thinking time. And what we'd be saying, as well as potentially being able to take something to market, we'd be saying, we'd be helping to submit the likelihood that that would stay here because potentially you're introducing them to Dunedin investors. Or if they don't need that, you're saying we want you and you're supporting that project. So for me, it's how do we take this to the next stage? Now, clearly we don't take it to the next stage, we don't support the first stage, so I'm hoping just to continue to do that.
Counselor Tavish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counselor Thompson and for me, it goes one step further and that is how we monitor the startup space and the effectiveness of that for audacious graduates. I have expressed concerns in the past and I continue to have those concerns about the location of that space. I think it's a very generous gesture on behalf of the university. But I think that there are questions to be asked as to whether or not that is the most appropriate place to help young people who are starting businesses be exposed to the wider Dunedin market and the community that is Dunedin. So I'd be really interested to hear over the next year or so how that space works for the young people involved. And I hope audacious will be looking at engaging with people going through the program over the next year or so to determine how that is working. So I think the focus for us, as Counselor Thompson rightly points out, is not just in growing business and growing startups, but actually growing startups and business which stays in Dunedin. And unless we're doing that, I think it would be hard to just apply continued investment in a program which isn't doing that. So I know that it has been done, you know, we have people at Ed Education, Perfect, Goffett Smith, McNamara, Paula Permar, Dunedin Basin have stayed here. And so clearly it's possible and it's just a matter of how we maximize that retention. So support this and support the ongoing development of it.
I think the comments from both Counselor Thompson and Counselor McTavish, for me, highlight the opportunity. And the growing Dunedin partnership has put some time into thinking about that. And I talked earlier about the discussions we've been having with the Upstart Incubator Trust. And taking that not as that board, but as a new board appointed by the university, the city and Polytech, who have the right to appoint and creating a new board. And our thinking is if we can do that, that that new board would in fact be charged with the whole process from audacious through incubation, through the growing phases of the new businesses so that we do link it together. So I think the work that's being done now is, are pieces of that puzzle. And audacious certainly has led to some businesses and it certainly is very well supported. I think if we can get that linkage through the, into the rest of the system and get it tied together, then we should see more of the small businesses. We've seen some really successful ones come out. It's just making that path a little clearer and getting more of them. So it's great work.
Counselor P, do you want...
Just a line or two, Mr. Chairman. I just, I mean, I think this is about cultivating young talent and giving them a starter springboard, as the report says. And the project itself is actually budding and I hope can be blooming in the next year or two. Anyway, I wish it were well, we should support it.
All right, I'll put the recommendation for all those in favor against Kerry. Moving on, I'd make, you're welcome, Sophie, to the table. Welcome Sophie, do you want to introduce the topic?
I had just increased awareness of the award, so ready for the cruise ships only come, hopefully the first one to be out.
So nothing else, questions, councillors? Counselor P.
Thanks, Sophia. Just thanks for your report and for keeping an eye on this very important sector of tourism. Just on page eight three, there's a, and there's a list there of port satisfaction averaging. And heated with melted sound, which most of us would hardly think is a port because these ships just walk in whilst in and whilst out again without putting anyone ashore. But port, is that table there based on recent data? Was it the 2015 stretch of data or...
Port satisfaction.
Years.
That was last season.
Last season, yeah. Okay, and is it about the port facilities or about the destination?
It's about destination. I think one of the challenges was seven events of last year, but we have actually come up with places in the present year.
So that's, so we're on an improve. That's good, thanks. And in terms of the recommendations or in the action plan, which are very detailed there, I'm just wondering in terms of any infrastructural changes at port, just where Port Otago stands, are you able to comment on where they are at with that?
These ports have been an amazing experience and they have actually spent $200,000 over the last few years in funding the facilities on the port and they're very committed to that.
Thank you. That's, that's a big spot.
Thank you. It's obviously touched on a little in the strategy that's been negotiated, being consulted on, but I'm wondering if you can give us any comment about the age-old question of the way, the way some of the tickets to, the ticketing prices to attractions are managed by the companies themselves and people on board the ships compared with, compared with what they buy if they've dropped up to the railway station or to someone on the wall? I mean, are we to assume that the off-stated comments about, shall we say, profiteering or something else less aggressive are true in terms of the ticket sales prices on board ship? And who profits that compared with the profit that goes into the local operator's pocket? I'm really wanting to know if it actually makes any difference. It probably makes a difference to whether people do something. But is there any way we can get through that and can you freshen that up for us?
I think it's really important that those operators are there to offer those services to the cruise passengers. When we talk, for example, of the train, the train is actually drawing up beside the cruise ship, offering a package that includes meals, et cetera, et cetera, and they do chart of the train themselves. So the train is usually, as an example, it's important for us to support to create product that the cruise companies are able to sell because they will often choose a port on profitability that offers them, obviously, the sales need to outweigh the port costs. So it's important that we have that product and it's also important that consumers have access to the product that they want to sell. But it really is about, I guess, what the consumer would like or what the customer would like. And often they chosen a cruise ship because of the safety environment and the features to us. They have actually sharpened their prices in the last couple of years.
Counselor Ward, please.
Thank you. A couple of questions about the SWOT analysis on eight point ten. There's the, the term ambivalent comes up a couple of times. Do I take that to mean that in the analysis, this analysis, there's a perception that there is a group strongly in favor and a group strongly opposed the cruise ship industry? Or is it taken to mean more broadly just an an ambivalency?
Perhaps it's about, our answer was ready for us to talk about cruise more often. I think it was people perhaps didn't see the benefits that cruise was bringing to the city. But that's where the word ambivalent comes from, it was for us to more strongly convey the welcome of the city and also the meaning that the cruise ships were just bringing to the city.
So it's not meant in a divisive sense?
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
And just one more, under weaknesses, we've got lack of adequate passenger facilities in the central city, availability of appropriate shelter for passengers and crew in central city, optica enclosures of passenger safety and access to eyesight. I'll add to that, you know, ongoing central city plan, shared spaces in the optica, that sort of thing. And then on eight point thirteen, under two point two, city infrastructure, investigate welcome options in the optica. Given all of the issues that have been highlighted in the SWOT analysis and that idea of creating a more welcoming arrival point, has any work done or will there be any work going on through this strategy? Looking at alternative arrival points for cruise ship passengers, for example, at the railway station?
This has been an ongoing challenge, I think. And we have, this year obviously changed the side of the carriage way that the cruise ships shuttles are arriving on. And that's fully covered and provides a good point that's also close to the eyesight. It is an ongoing question and we are working within the central city plan and looking at some of those options. The railway station itself has a lot of challenges. There's quite a lot of traffic congestion down there. It's also close to two state highways. And our challenges for some of the international visitors is that the first way that they were logged across the road is the wrong way. So we have to be very, very careful of that at the same time. I mean, when anyone goes overseas, you'll do it yourself, look the wrong way to step out and we just don't want anything happening during that.
Right, but those conversations are excluded?
No, never, no, we would like to find the perfect place and it's an ongoing challenge.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Well, just really following up on Counselor Benson Pope's question really, and that's a helpful answer that she gave. But I guess it's, well, is it also the case that to a certain extent the cruise companies are, their economic equation is a combination of what they're charging you to be on the boat versus what they can make from other activities while you're on the boat? And to the extent that the margin in one goes down, the cost of the other goes up? And it's about trying to maximize the volume through getting the equation right? Is that, sorry, that's...
You know, you've met, you've managed with experts that work with them on managing to maximize passenger expenditure.
So we have to be a little bit careful, perhaps, that we think that it's important to have higher numbers coming here, that we don't get too agitated about things that might actually reduce those numbers?
It's true, we've had to keep that balance and also to allow for carriage operators to get internet saving and to have their product on the internet as well and to obviously say that it's a cruise product. Because as times change, the cruise passengers are getting more savvy and going on the internet and looking for the products themselves.
Counselor Evans.
On page eight point nine, number three, it talks about increasing the average daily spend per passenger, which I understand being highly desirable, but also understand actually being quite a task. I've tried every year or two now for quite some number of years to get some interest in helicopter coastline tours direct from the wharf. I understand that it's done in Christchurch and has been very successful at least a few years ago. And when I've tried to progress the idea here, come up against Port Otago who basically said, oh no, safety concerns, can't do that. I'm wondering, is it perhaps time, a year or two's passed and someone's just sort of, to have another look at it? I mean, we do have some very good, very successful helicopter operators here. We have a much better coastline to look at from a helicopter than they do up north. And in terms of increasing the average daily spend, it's a very quick ride at a very handsome return. If only Port Otago could be convinced to allow a chopper to land on beside the boat, basically. That would mean probably cordoning off an area, perhaps even putting a few containers in if they were really worried about safety as a fence. But is it, is it something that, is this kind of idea something that you can, you can look at at all?
Yeah, I'm always happy to help operators coordinate with the port and the port can be very helpful. Obviously, the safety over eyes, everything, but I'm hesitant to put it on it.
Should, in order to try and get a bit more happening in this area, should I perhaps go and see Gales and get them to put a proposal to the port? Or are you quite happy to just test the waters and see if it's possible first?
I also have my job as operator at the port, which is business support. So I'd be happy to talk to the in and out of, and you also talk to the port.
I just think if you could talk to the port in the first instance, if it's an on-flyer, so to speak, then we'd be, they'd be pleased with this time. Going to eight point twelve, I notice in the next page, there are half a dozen recommended actions involving coordination, but that there is nil budget in any of these. Does this mean that we're looking for a budget for these actions?
I've got a few, I've taken them under my job description. My job description is destination management and I require those activities as well, the note, the notes, the manager.
So the fact that there's nil in the budget line on all of these is not something we should be concerned about? It's something that you are taking under your wing anyway? Thank you very much.
Because what I consider that what benefits crew in those destination management, actually benefits steam towers that are upstream.
Thank you.
Counselor Gallo.
Do we know sort of in a pie graph or whatever sense how money is spent in Dunedin from cruise? Sort of like, which proportion is spent on like a train trip and which proportion is spent on retail and what on hospitality and...
I will check, survey some of this because we have, this year we put a satisfaction survey into the back of the Otago data times cruise guide and that has some surveying there on what passengers are spending their money on. So we want to have that information.
Could you get that through our people?
You mean through the council people or...
No, sorry, I'm just saying, I mean Dunedin people. Just if we're focusing sort of efforts about doing some sorts of things, you'd want to know whether, for instance, if either they're spending nothing in bars and we want to increase the amount we spend. I'm just thinking of what we do when we go somewhere else as visitors, not just cruise ships, but however we arrive, and different challenges with cruise ships, but however we arrive, you'd really want to know, wouldn't you, where people are spending money, so as you know, we do.
Yes, I do believe we have some research. I haven't got it in my head at the moment, but we will also be doing more research, because obviously, part of what we want to do is increase visitor expenditure. So it's looking at what people are spending on, and also enabling our retailers and operators to maximise the fatigue as well.
Councilwoman White?
Thank you. Just to let everybody know, I'm actually on the Cruise Action Group as a Dunedin representative, so I've been a part of this all the way through. But Sophie, can you elaborate how Port Otago works with the Cruise Action Group and the cruise ships coming to town?
So Port Otago is one of the key units of the Cruise Action Group. And as I said before, they have spent over $200,000 over the last two years improving the port experience. They've improved the walkway. It's a little bit lopsided, so they've built in the floors. They've tripled the size of the welcome area. There's a free wifi area in there as well. They've also increased the signage so that visitors are able to find their way around. And this year, I think we would send the only TV, we've put in some murals by our local artists. And we're also working on a better welcome for next year with my tag. And we're also inviting the councillors, hopefully early December, to come down on a cruise day and see our work.
Councilwoman O'Neil?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Sophie, my question is just around the opportunity to provide greater services to the actual cruise ships by way of supplying product for the, for their patrons or for the cruise ship passengers. Do we have an opportunity there, or was that pretty much all sewn up simply because of where we fit in the schedule of visits? And I'm thinking food, I'm thinking anything else that's required by the passengers?
Are we getting COVID along into the Cruise Action team for this year? I have been speaking with some of the COVIDers through cruise ships, and there's an opportunity to show his local product, which is really exciting. And the COVIDers build up the relationships with the ships and with the staff as well. And they're certainly going beyond the extramarital and pushing Dunedin product on their ships.
Thank you. And it's very minor, but I know this is a draft report, but when you refer to the community board out there, it's Charles rather than Paul Charles. Minor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tavish?
Just one question, Sophie, and that's in regards, when I looked at the discussion section on eight four, and you looked at the lineup of factors that apparently cruise passengers base their satisfaction on, I guess my question was, is clearly the work that you have outlined in the action plan touches on all of those things, but it's not necessarily laid out in that way. So you don't see the amount of fit that is going on each of those areas. Now, clearly, if you were to do that, you'd have to have a pretty strong idea that Cruise New Zealand was right, in terms of what cruise ship passengers did base their satisfaction on. But I wondered whether there had been any discussion within the Cruise Action Group about the relative merits of Dunedin in each of these areas, and which perhaps needed a stronger focus. For example, I see that you have half of a line attached to encouraging local retailers to stop locally made goods. Now, if that is one of one, two, three, four, you know, it perhaps deserves my priority. I don't know whether or not that's the case, but that may be the case. And yeah, so I guess I wondered whether the action group had had those discussions, and whether you decided against focusing on those satisfaction areas deliberately and addressed it in the way that you have for another reason. I wouldn't agree with you, I think. You want to hear my turn?
Yeah, I guess we could overtly answer that, but it is certainly embedded within everything that we do. And we do produce the retailers' top tips, and we do talk about supplying local products. And so there's a top five tips retailers, which posting over the scenes, saying kia ora, and entering local made products as well. So that's a sort of an outcome of the work that we've been doing to encourage operators to push local made product out.
Do you have a sense of how we stack up in each of those areas relative to other destinations? Like, has there been an analysis done of that? For example, if there are another port that, where every shop was stocking New Zealand-made products, and that was a really important thing for cruise ship tourists, then that might be something that we needed to think about more strongly. Or, you know, friendliness, or, you know, and I guess some of them are hard to gauge, but yeah, this seems like it's a fairly generic survey, is that right, as far as New Zealand?
Yes, and we do, as I said, we have set up a satisfaction survey this season. And we also have the University of Otago do some research for us. So I guess we need to be better at getting that, that homepage and set them in our heads, because that's what we do, try to carry out to people. But inside tourism, which goes internationally, mentioned how well our group is doing in the last edition. There's a couple of pages on our Cruise Action Group, and we do coordinate with the other cruise destinations. And we are quite ahead, I think. I offered all of our material to share with the ports, because as New Zealand, we want to be the best destination to share the top tips and cruise operators. We do do a lot of work, and we do, I hope, to share it. But I think we are doing very well.
Councilwoman Hawke?
Just a quick comment, quick question about opening hours, which is cited a couple of times as a weakness. Is that largely Port Royal not being opened early enough, and Toitu not opening till ten, that sort of thing?
We do have a number of challenges with encouraging operators to open earlier. And we do, by doing critique, some of the crews and suggest that they might want to open when the shuffler arrive in town. That's up to the members of the citizens here. And we have talked to DCC run institutions as well, and to balance, I guess, the costs versus the fees, just like in the annual process.
Seems to approach to the end of questions. Would someone like to move the recommendations? Councilwoman O'Neil? Seconded, Councilwoman Law? Any debate? Not a poll or favour? Against? Kerry? Puts us to the last item. This agenda, notification items for consideration by the chair.
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but noting this Emerson's announcement at Moon Day, if you've seen that, and to finally congratulate that all on sale, this land going through.